The reason for the public hearing is to expend funds from the school equipment expendable trust fund. This was established in 2002 by Warren Article, and the purpose of expending from it is to purchase updated sound systems for both Farmington High School and Henry Wilson Memorial School. This is the time of year that we have a lot of important events in the gymnasium and stuff, and you know, this will be for, obviously, for next year, but both of the systems are getting to the point where it's time for replacements so that we can hear things a little better. It's kind of unfair when you're recognizing children for accomplishments and you really can't hear well. So, for some of the bigger events, we've brought in other sound systems, but this is to work on replacing both of those. So, we'll keep that open for an hour. Does anybody want to speak about this particular public hearing piece as of right now? Okay. If anyone who's watching, welcome to those of you watching from home, if you want to come up and ask any questions or give any input during the next hour, give me a wave if you happen to walk into the room, and we'll interrupt what we're current board business that we're taking care of so that you can be heard and you don't have to necessarily wait around. Is there any public input at this time? Public input for the board about any particular topics? Okay, hearing none, I'll move on down the agenda to approval of minutes?
Oh, I thought we were doing this one first.
We're gonna do that right after the minutes, yeah. Minutes of May 6, 2019, public session. So moved by Mrs. Moore. Second by Ms. McElhenney. Discussion on these. Hearing none, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor? Aye. One abstention. Minutes of May 6, non-public session one. So moved by Mrs. Moore, second by Ms. McElhenney. Discussion on these.
Just at the end there, there's a B after my name, not sure why. I think that's just a typo, should be removed. Right? Is that right? Thanks. Do you get that?
All right, anything else? Okay, all those in favor as amended? Aye. And one abstention. May, we're gonna call it May 7. It says May 7 and 8. We did have to recess that meeting and come back in, but minutes of May 7, non-public session one, all those are sealed.
We are the public minutes, though.
Let's jump down to the public minutes of...
Did everybody see the public minutes? Because I don't know if they were in the folder.
Oh, I'm sorry, I jumped ahead of you.
The May 7 ones, there's nothing in them.
Public minutes, do I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Mrs. Moore. I'll second it.
I think we looked at them at the last meeting, but...
We did.
I seconded that, I don't know if you heard it, okay.
Do we need a roll call vote whenever we adjourn as well? Or is that just when we're going in and out of non-public?
I think just in and out of public.
Okay.
Yes?
That's how I've always understood it.
Okay.
Anything else there? All those in favor? Aye.
Motion to table, the 7, 8 sealed.
Motion by Mrs. Moore to table, May 7 sealed. Second by Ms. McElhenney. All those in favor? Aye. Okay, May 13, public session.
I'm a tripper.
So moved by Mrs. Cardinal, second by Ms. McElhenney. Discussion on these.
Well, I don't normally comment on that. I just wanted to clarify on page 4 of 8, under new business, where there's a discussion of policy EFAA. It says, "Ms. Cardinal, move to edit policy EFAA." My recollection was that you agreed to let me send the mailings out with that $100 threshold, it didn't actually modify the policy.
Right, I made some suggestions.
Yeah, I thought it was on it. Oh, okay, all right, great. I just wanted to make sure I understood it correctly. Thanks.
Anything else on those?
You got to spell your company's name.
On page 5 of 8, I think you wanted, it's, the board asked what project income, fresh fruits vegetable program, FFVP, I think is what you wanted, and you initially just said the last two reversed. And then on page 6, under old business, 1, 2, 3, bottom of the fourth paragraph, Ms. McElhenney advised she was, it says wash, but I'm not sure. I don't know, what is the paragraph?
It's quite about a treasure, if a treasure had been found, one had not been found at this time, we needed to find a Farmington town resident. You were gonna, Angie was gonna bring the, pardon me, Mrs. Cardinal.
Oh, we, I had asked, I had asked Ms. McElhenney if her schedule had changed and if she was still able to be the budget committee.
She was, maybe.
And she said, so the word is was.
Okay, okay. On page 7, the new bus driver, her name is Annette Dashna, D-A-S-H-N-A-W. And then on the back, page 8 of 8, Hannah Owens, spells her name, H-A-N-A.
Anything else? All those in favor as amended? Aye, thank you. Non-public session one for May 13. So moved by Mrs. Moore, second by Mr. Frida. Discussion. All those in favor? Aye. May 13, non-public session two. So moved by Mrs. Moore, second by Ms. McElhenney. Discussion.
Are we on session two?
Yes.
Ms. Julie Couch at the Department of Education, the high school can have someone on an all-track plan. So just the high school, it's not the entire district. I just wanted to make sure that was clear in regards to, so the Farmington High School can have someone on an all-plan.
Anything else? All those in favor as amended?
Hell, this name is also needs to be fixed on.
Fixed on that one as well.
Oh, yes, yep, Annette Dashna.
All those in favor as amended? Aye. Non-public session three. So moved by Mrs. Moore, second by Mrs. Cardinal. Discussion on these for May 13. Hearing none, a call for a vote, all those in favor? Aye. Minutes of May 13, non-public session four. So moved by Mrs. Moore, second by Mrs. Cardinal. Discussion. All those in favor? Aye. And minutes of May 13, non-public session five.
To move.
So moved by Mrs. Cardinal, second by Ms. McElhenney. Discussion. All those in favor? Aye. Okay, we're gonna go down to reports, we're gonna jump ahead of here a little bit, and we're gonna jump to what on the agenda is listed under new business as 9B, the performance contract presentation by Siemens. So, I would ask that whoever is presenting, that they take the microphone off at the podium and identify themselves and speak into that microphone, because that's the microphone that the folks at home can hear, okay?
Do you want to do the presentations first?
Yeah, we can. No, I'm looking at that. Yeah, he's gonna use the projector, I'm not.
Just to let you know, in the packet it was put together, there was a letter from the DOE that doesn't actually go with this presentation, so it goes later. At least in my packet, it was clipped to.
It was clipped to.
So my name is Mike Wentworth, I'm with Siemens Industry. In your packets, you have some paperwork regarding our...
What's the file name?
Proposal to expand the service grid.
Maybe the last three documents, I think, in your packet. There's objectives, short-term, long-term planning, and some contract coverage details.
I was asked to attend the meeting to answer any questions you might have about the reasons behind why we're gonna, why we're trying to expand the contract. Really, there's three parts to it. We've been working with the facilities director and the business administrator for a while now to address some of the maintenance that's been deferred over the years for HVAC and mechanical things. We also have automation, building automation in a couple buildings. That's probably not where it needs to be as well, so we've come up with a plan with them to expand what we do, and it's really kind of the first piece of what we're proposing. We'll take over some of the maintenance from Larry's crew of some of the equipment that you have. What we've found, and he's told us, is that you're in a reactive mode right now, spending a lot of time just repairing things and not getting to the maintenance piece of it. So that's piece one. When we're into it, maybe a year, we've brought our expertise to bear on, you know, your systems. We plan to work with the facility director and the business administrator to develop a capital improvement plan for needed replacements as equipment ages out. We feel that doing it in this way can save the district money because you don't need to get an engineering study to tell you the things that we can tell you. Part three of our plan is to talk with you tonight also about a funding vehicle, performance contracting, which Siemens does and has done with a number of schools in Maine and New Hampshire over the last 15 years. Before I introduce the STAR Act, do you have any que, oh yeah, the Performance Contracting Division is the STAR, make no mistake about it, and every STAR has to have an opening act, and I'm very, very happy to do that. Has everybody had a chance to read down through the...
Before you hand it over, if I could just speak to the board on the budgetary thing to give you kind of the history, because you've seen this broken up different ways in our budget. Historically, we've budgeted for these services in two different places, under controls and under maintenance. We currently have a certain amount of money in the next year's budget to cover those things, and we historically have been pretty close. By combining those two services together and having them do this expanded service, we not only get more service there in that they're taking care of more areas that we need, we're also saving on truck charges, because while they're out at the building, if we have something else that they need to fix, we're saving on that. And we're still coming in roughly $13,000 underneath the budget that we've allocated, so if we had an equipment failure, we can address that as well. So it seems like kind of a win all around from the budget side of things. I can't speak to the mechanics, that would be Larry, but...
Yeah, one of the key things that we've added to this, to our contract, has been what we call customer-directed time, and that is when our guys are here doing PM work, Larry's facility people can work with them to correct some of the things that need to be fixed rather than maintained. And eventually, you move out of that reactive mode and start enjoying some of the savings that a preventative maintenance plan brings.
And one final point again, on the budgetary side, typically for contracts in excess of $5,000, we put them out to bid. More than half of this contract has to do with proprietary programming that is by the controllers, so for us to put this out to bid, we would still have to pay Siemens to come in and do that piece of the contract. So, I believe you guys, I think Larry mentioned in a previous year, we've done some service and that we haven't put it out to bid because basically most of it has to do with proprietary equipment that others couldn't maintain.
And there's a definite advantage to having one contractor doing both your controls and your mechanical service, because they dovetail together, and you know, if you've got one party responsible for both of them, there's no finger pointing. Any questions on this piece?
Or any questions for the budget?
I'm gonna introduce Tom Seekins from our Building Performance and Sustainability Division, he's gonna talk to you about performance contract.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I feel like I should be running up behind the curtain or something. What the heck is wrong with you? Oh, boy. I know, and I don't really know any good magic tricks or anything. I'm Tom Seekins, I manage the energy group for Siemens. I've worked for Siemens for 15 years in just doing the schools side of things, so just K-12, that's a lot of school board meetings. So, we've done a lot, as Mike had alluded to, in New Hampshire. See, how you run a Barrington shirt, you completed a project there, a performance contract a couple of years ago, so you've got some, you know, I know references or everything when it comes to this kind of work, so. This business, as Mike had said, about a decade ago, really got busy, because school revolving renovation funds, budgets across the board, especially in Maine and New Hampshire, K-12, right down to the classroom level, is cut every year. Maintenance budgets are cut, one of the first things to get cut every time you're putting together a budget. So, having been in just the K-12 world for 15 years straight, just all I do is I see a lot of that, and it doesn't matter what tax bracket you're in, everyone feels it. So, there's no surprise that this mechanism has become probably the most popular thing that we've seen for schools to get actual capital projects done. And it's not, the days of just being low-hanging fruit, like doing LED lights and the boring stuff that everyone knows about, is definitely a thing of the past. And these projects, we're doing real capital. So we're doing exterior, we're doing windows, brick and mortar, roofs, classroom environment being not just the ventilation equipment, but ceilings, lights, controls, bringing ceilings down where they didn't exist before, and I'll show you some pretty cool pictures of that along in the presentation. I'll try to keep this brief, I know the Bruins are playing, so some people probably want to get home, and so I'll keep it rolling. But, we've done this presentation here in the past, I know I've been involved in this district for several years, and it wasn't myself, or it was a colleague of mine, Sean, that had done it, so some of you had seen some of this information, but by all means, it helps to just ask a question as we go along. I hate the sound of my own voice, so break it up and then ask a question if you'd like. Some of this information I did give to Jenna before, so if anyone wanted to look it over, you could, and had questions. But, this really, when it comes down to it, this slide I like the best, because it does definitely kind of show you how a portion of this can be paid for. Because when it comes down to it, everyone's always thinking, asking the question, okay, you design all of the projects, and they could be substantial projects, like I said, brick and mortar windows, and you'll see what they consist of. You hold all the costs to do that, and by the way, this doesn't mean that Siemens is gonna do this project, I want to put that out there, this is not a commercial for our organization on this. I'm telling you merely how it works, because you're probably, you're still gonna want to go through the competitive process, you're gonna want to put in RFQ, and we totally understand that. We're gonna have to compete for the business just like anyone else, so I'm merely just telling you how the process works, and then from there, you will have to issue the RFQ for a couple of weeks, give ESCOs, energy services companies like ours, that are qualified to respond, and then you choose who you'd like to interview, and that's how you make the whole process work. Typically, someone from the board is part of that, definitely business office, facilities, and superintendent, so you guys will form a committee and go from there. But, so, moving along, to the left-hand side, you see that gray block. A big portion of this, not all, because it's up to you, but is your current utility budget. So the whole impetus behind it is, yeah, you are putting in new LED lights, you're doing some maybe fuel conversions, you're putting in new ventilation equipment, you're doing things that, you're tightening up the buildings, building envelope, insulation, roofs, windows. All those things accumulatively save energy, and the whole process really is that you keep your utility budget the same. Carry some escalators in there, we usually see around 3%, just to kind of react to what the market's doing. But you keep your utility budget the same, after construction, you've saved quite a bit of money through energy savings by putting in all those new measures, as you can see on the right-hand side. So the green block would be payments to the bank. Typically, these are done 99.9% through a taxes and please purchase. The ESCO that you choose to partner with really is going to try hard to get you as much free money as they can, because selfishly, the more money they can give you, the bigger project you're gonna want to do. So, state incentives, ever source, there, you know, PSNH, you'll go after everything. If you want renewable energy, being solar or solid fuel, biomass, there's thermal energy credits in New Hampshire that we've taken advantage of on several projects, that can be very attractive to a project, because they give you those every year. So they'll be looking at all of that, but the remaining portion has to be financed, right? And so they're done through a taxes and please purchase. And in years prior, they were not as popular as a bond, that's completely flip-flopped. The rates that we're seeing right now, and we just did about $20 million in K-12 projects in Maine and New Hampshire, and bid it all out financially, the rates were very competitive with bonds, but there's no risk, so, meaning there's a non-appropriation clause built into there that you're not bonded to it, unlike a bond. So, every year, the bank understands that they're carrying the risk, not you guys. So, the rates have been, you know, very low threes for 17, 18-year lease purchase, which is amazing. They give you the year of no payments to do the construction, and then from there, you're making that payment to the bank, which is the green box. All that is set up, though, I'll show you how that works, but then you've got your service payments, that's the, what Mike just alluded to, you're not gonna put in new boilers, new controls, and all these new things that create a healthy learning environment for the students and staff, run your buildings more efficiently, and operate a little bit more efficiently, without servicing everything. So you can't build this great financial performance, everything looks great, and then all of a sudden you whack you with a $100,000 service contract to maintain the stuff, you just can't do that. That's all part of your state of New Hampshire law, and that will be part of your cash flow. So you see all the numbers, very, very clear, very, there's no ambiguity to this whole process, you see the numbers, you see everything, so that you guys make an educated decision. The excess savings essentially is basically, most ESCOs are conservative on their guaranteed savings, because the annual savings tied to this is guaranteed by the company. So if we say we're gonna save you $100,000 a year in total energy, and we save you 90, and it's because of the calculations that we did were incorrect, or the things that we designed were incorrect, we actually are obligated for the length of refinancing to write you a check each and every year until it's fixed. So that's why this process is, as you can see, very attractive to most school districts. This is just a really basic pie chart I put together the other day for one other school district, actually Laconia, we just started their project, they wanted something like this, just to kind of show it, you know, and put out in their little newsletter, but you can see your total energy cost, that to the right-hand side, obviously it drops down again, this is kind of like the bar chart, but just a little simpler form, and then that cost avoidance of the energy is what's making the payment to the institution you choose, so, just kind of reinforces the last thing. I had all kinds of sound effects for this one, it was really cool, and then I thought it was cool after a while, so I stopped doing it. That would have been my act, I should have come up with that slide. This is just showing you the delineation between a bond and a lease purchase, because a lot of people get confused about that, so they keep calling, even after we bid it out for a lease purchase, a lot of, your colleagues will call it a bond, it's definitely not a bond, it's much different, it's very flexible, you can get out of this, in a bond you cannot get out of it, and I show you the differences there. Through a lease purchase, the days of low bid construction work are a thing of the past, thank God for facilities directors and you guys as the building owners, because you don't have to do that anymore. We will be getting lowest qualified bids, we get competitive bids on every single thing that we bid out there, and we show you those, but we pick contractors that you've had good experiences with in the past, local contractors, we would definitely go after, I'm sure any ESCO that you chose would probably, I think it would be a wise decision to use the contractors that have done well by you guys over the years. There's contractors that have not, because they've gotten low bid work and haven't performed. You're not held to that, so you guys choose the contractors that you like. Through the ESCO process, there are no change orders, so during construction, if something is missed, I can tell you we've had some big oops before, we've done some big projects where we missed 120 valves summer before last in a school where we put in new controls so we could actually control the classroom temperature. I know that sounds far-fetched, but you actually can do that.
That's a dice.
It just takes a little bit of money, and, you know. We thought the contractor carried the valves, and it came to find out that they wasn't in their bid, and that's the bid world, right? We do it too, we do bid, we do actually competitively bid on that stuff, and we look at these specs and we'd say, we all look at each other on the table and say, this is missing my $50,000 worth of stuff. But if you include it, you don't win the bid, right? And that's how every contractor looks at it. In this case, we had to pay $85,000 for valves, because we can't go back to you for a change order, that's the process, so it is, that can be very beneficial for you, not so much on the ESCO side. I mentioned a lot of this stuff already, and again, you guys had, you had that slide before, also the limited cost to issue funding, the bond, the bond market can be anywhere from 3% to 5%, I mean, if you had a $5 million bond, your cost to issue that bond could be anywhere from $60,000 to $80,000. With a taxes and please purchase, there is no cost, it's probably around $2,000, $2,500 legal fees. I don't know if you used Garo, Diane Garo, but she's done a lot of the projects we've done in New Hampshire, and it's limited cost versus a bond, so you can see how that's attractive. This is, can you see that by any chance? That's a lot, I apologize. Every single point of this slide, every measure broken out, electrical panels, HVAC 1, HVAC 2, window replacement, exterior doors, everything is broken out from a cost perspective, toll savings, and any rebates that you can get to it, and then over here, we color charted it, because Mike talked about a capital planning mechanism where, that's a really hard thing to do with schools. Everyone says, "Give me a 10-year plan," well, that's impossible, you know. You guys are, every year, appropriating your budget to match what you've got, and so coming up with a capital plan for 10 years is very difficult. This does that for you. And, we actually started this one in Hopkinton Schools when we did their project, but the red would mean immediate, you know, zero to three years, it needs to be done like ASAP. And that's things like boilers that are failing, or windows that are rotting out, things that are really imperative to operating the buildings effectively. So, then it would be the green, would, you know, that would be the 1, 2, 3 years, however you want to span it out, we determined that when we started, but it helps give you guys that whole roadmap, so that when you, you're not gonna do all these measures, you may select half of these, and that's your choice. Whichever ESCO you choose, they're gonna give you probably far more, probably twice as many measures, facility improvement measures, they're called, the FIMs, than you're actually gonna choose, because you guys have to determine what you can afford, you know, in your annual budget. Jenna knows that very well, we had a discussion about this, and right off the bat, understood it completely, so it wasn't a hard thing to talk about, and understood it, yeah, we can, we do what we can do, and that's it, your budget is your budget, so. But then, after the project, it's not done, there's still things to be done, and you have it laid out right here, I was gonna say black and white, but it's actually red, green, green, yellow, so you have a plan. Like I said, some pretty cool stuff. This is an elementary school we just did this past summer, moot doors, new entryway, new windows, the siding on the top to the bottom, that's brick and black windows. I did this presentation not too long ago, and believe it or not, someone said, "What was the before and after?" I was shocked, I couldn't talk for a few minutes. So, some really cool stuff, you know, that does, that does not cost a ton of money, that was like $60,000 by the time we got the competitive bids to do that. So it doesn't take millions of dollars to make vast improvements to your buildings. It can be, we didn't do that entire elementary school, we just did the front, because this whole project had to be, we fitted it in a box, it had to be about $1.4 million, it couldn't go anymore, but they've done many phases since then. You can do several phases of this, it doesn't mean you have to do it all in one project. There's school districts that we've done, Oyster River Schools, I think we've done three performance contracts for those guys, so they, every year, they kind of break it out. Boiler room on the left and right there, as you can see, something out of a horror movie on the left-hand side, saw 5 or 6, or whatever one it was, and then you've got your new boiler room on the right-hand side, I mean, this is not done as a quick fix, this is done as a 30 to 40-year improvement, you know, you do it right when it comes to this whole process. The classroom, you know, those unit ventilators, teachers love those, they are noisy, they're really not that effective. If the opportunity presents itself, in this case, we got rid of it, went with a cabinet unit heater, put all new shelves in, that was done by a local carpenter actually, so the local work was kept, you know, as local as we can make it, and then put new ventilators on the roof, so it was quiet, you can't hear it run now, it saves money, the classroom environment is much better, which ultimately is the most important thing, right? So, pretty cool stuff are being done under these projects. Again, new windows, they wanted to bulldoze that building, and then they had a ribbon cutting, sorry, I was like, all it is is new windows, but. Classroom, again, on the left-hand side, brought all new fire alarm devices in there, security from a life safety standpoint, lowered the ceiling, it heats better, it cools better, new ventilation, and obviously you can see the new LED lights with new ceiling. new ventilation, and obviously you can see the new LED lights with new ceilings. It looks like a new building when you're in the classroom, but it's, you know, did take a ton of money to get there, and this is something we see a lot, this whole, we call that the open architecture, you know, going for that industrial look, just missed the mark slightly there. Part of the new ceilings, new lights, once again, that was a different project. And then sometimes it doesn't take much more than some paint and power washing and some new windows, and you've got yourself a nice exterior there. So you can go real expensive, or, you know, do what it takes to get by if you're not sure what you're going to do with the facility. Windows, your Wilson School there, this would be, I think, an awesome candidate for that front driveway structure, those windows. Yeah, those windows. There's a lot of them. And so same with this school here, on the left-hand side, you can see, that's a big high school, and up in Rockland, Maine, actually. And those are original. And then we did a whole Portland glass, ended up winning that bid, and it looks like a brand-new high school. It's amazing. And all we did is one side. So we're going to do the next side, the next phase. And new entryways, consolidating windows, new roofs, new doors, made a new vestibule with new card access, security-wise. So again, it doesn't have to be just energy-related, you can do a lot of things here. From a cafeteria's perspective, you can see obviously the floors, the lights, the ceilings, the paint, the new windows on the right-hand side. Put in new ADA-compliant boys and girls bathrooms that didn't exist before, so we actually built new bathrooms in this elementary school. So all while finding the money within their current budget, so they didn't have to add money to their budget the following year. So you can see why this tool becomes more attractive for schools. And again, before and after in the boiler room, some things that are sometimes hard to get in a budget, ADA-compliant ramps, or can, too many, some buildings have too many windows. So in this case, we did a study on where the north-facing wind is and the light, the optimal light would be, and then we put in sensors, and then consolidated the windows, and it turned out great. It was energy savings and much better look. And this one, you know, this is a good example of operational efficiency. Before, food service would come to the front of the building, disrupt students, and have to wait for kids to pass through, and it was a, you know, from a safety standpoint, probably not the best. And they were just told us the way the building is, where we added doors to the back of the building, that's why you see those two doors. We're not just proud of the two doors that we put in there, actually added doors to the back of the building. And then they were told before that they couldn't have ventilation because of the structure, the ceiling height, as you can see, it's low, and then we added ventilation outside and then covered it. So there are ways to make things fit, even though they may seem not to not. And that is me just doing a little bit on the stool there, not a big deal, just a big thing I came up with. It's not me, actually. So again, we've talked about this many times with you guys in many school systems. There's so many RFQs coming up with these things right now, we can't even keep up with all of them, but we have a service presence here, so that's why we're here talking about it with you guys. All right?
I had a question for you. Could you kind of lay out, I know you spoke with us about it, but can you kind of talk about the timeline of what, how the projects go, what your first phase is, what you do first, and how, like, just kind of the general sense of the timeline?
Yeah, absolutely. Good question. From here, you would put out your RFQ if it was something you guys were interested in doing. You have to advertise for at least a week. There's no real timetable on what that is, but longer than a week, you're wasting your time. And then it gives ESCOs a couple weeks to respond. But that's the first thing, just kind of get that out of the way. You get all the responses in, and then you determine, depending on how many you get, state law says you get to interview at least three of them. So you formulate your committee, right, to do the interviews. They're about an hour each, so it's a few hours to interview. And then, once you select the company that makes the most sense, that's best fit for you guys, you enter into a letter of intent. And the letter of intent basically says that you are going to partner with XYZ ESCO, and you're going to proceed with an investment-grade level audit, level-three audit. And level-three audit is basically, you're going through and looking at everything, and you're coming up with prices, payback, and a way to fund it. So that process, a school district of this size would probably take around 90 to 120 days complete, and that's, that's with meetings along the way, you know? That's a lot of information. And in that time, you've kind of looking at your project, what you can afford to do along the way. So the days of doing just an energy audit is, we don't even bother, because you've got to come up with a three-ring binder that sits on your desk and collects dust and tells you what you already know, is that you've got deferred maintenance and a lot more deferred maintenance than you have budget for. So that doesn't come into the play. What comes into play is what you can afford while we're developing it. There is no point in spending any money doing research for expansion of a building or something that's just never going to happen, building a rocket ship on top of the roof of the high school. It doesn't make sense. Let's focus on the things that we determine and you determine are most important. That's done during that 120-day cycle. From there, after that, we then set out an RFP for banks to bid on your financing. So again, you release a competitive bid, takes a couple weeks, best, lowest qualified rate wins, we work with you to do that, the ESCO does. And then you have a whole year to do construction. Obviously, most of the heavy lifting is done in the summer months. Like right now, we are full-tilt on Laconia Project and all the other school projects that we have done, but you have a whole year to do it. Typically takes around 10 months. So you really don't have to, you're not spending any money for about a year and a half, because your first payment to the bank is not due for an entire year. That's another bonus of the taxes and police purchases, that it gives you an entire year of no payments.
Tell me about the tool that you provide them use of to be able to help them filter all of their FIMs and match it up to their budget.
Yeah, that was the one I showed that had all the numbers, but that, I should have said, that actually ties to a cash flow. We went over it in your office when you first, and we went over it a little bit. It all ties, so whenever you click on one of those cells, it populates it into a total project amount and then an annual contribution or annual commitment. So it shows you on an annual basis what you're actually committed to for this, for said project. So if it's a million dollars worth of stuff, here's what your payment structure looks like. So it builds it the whole way. Then if you click back in, okay, we're going to do that whole bank of windows, east-facing side of the high school, we're going to do that, click that back in, okay. All right, that increases the payment by $10,000 a year. Are we good with it? Can we afford that? And that's how you actually select your project. So whatever you don't select, it's still on the list. Like I said, it helps you build that capital plan, but that tool becomes like the holy grail of the whole project, because then you can see exactly what you can afford to do when you're choosing it. So you don't just roll the dice and wait for a referendum. You don't have to do that. There is no warrant article mandated, or you guys are looking at this from a committee that is making the decision, because the taxpayers are not held responsible for the project as they are in a bond. That's, again, the most attractive aspect of the lease purchase. Because, again, if you went out of business, you could literally call the bank, call Bank of America, whoever gets it, and come take all the lights out, we can't afford it, we're done with that, you know? You can literally do that contractually. That won't happen, obviously, but, you know. So again, probably 90, 120 days to do your actual audit, then your financing, eight to 10 months to do your construction, and then a year later, you know, that year later, you start making payments on all the things that you put in. So when we do multiple-phase projects, sometimes it skips a year, you know, because it's a year ahead, and then you do another one. But it's all planned out for you, it's really slick. We're actually bringing the STEM side of it, too, to help out the, that's a big deal, making that part of the process these days. We're linked in with Teachers Institutes for Excellence in STEM, that's a national company. So we bring it in as part of the audit, and if you have people that are active in that world, we love to have them onboard from day one. If Siemens was doing it, I know the ESCOs probably do it, too. So, you know, you work with them right off the bat to help build that into your curriculum. So that can be a huge deal. Try to make it curriculum-based and facility-based.
Questions?
So we've seen this presentation. This board has actually voted to go ahead and move forward with it. Our delay has really been on our end as a school district. But there was something that you brought up when you showed us that customer choice selection tool with all the FIMs and the red, white, and blue.
Yep.
If it goes ahead and assigns, you know, cash needs on an annual basis, I don't suppose it also ties into comparison of what we currently have in place, you know, for example, the windows and which side they're facing and how much heat is emitting, or, you know, the, how difficult it is to regulate the temperature in that particular room. And give us an ROI?
Oh, yeah.
Or estimate that?
Yeah. If that's, so a lot of the projects lately have been less about simple payback and return on investment because it's their infrastructure, you know? So it's really, this needs to be done. So we get that the payback's going to be longer, but yeah, absolutely. That's all part of the calculations. It's that we just don't, we don't love to get wrapped up in the simple payback thing because it's hard. You guys operate 60 hours a week. So even though you think that, on average, right, so that's utility spend, your utility bills are big, but they're not, you know, like a hospital or, you know, a jail or something that runs 24/7, it's, they're not as bad as you'd think. And schools get really good rates. So it is tough to make big infrastructure things pay for themselves quickly. That's why solar never makes the cut in the schools, because it's a 75-year payback. You tell people that, and they're like, oh, my God, you know? And that's the reality, you know?
See, that's where having content experts like this, whole engineering teams come in and look at our district holistically.
This would follow the buildings and grounds, so. Should we be moving forward on that? Seems we've already.
Yeah, it sounds like step one is forming a committee.
Right.
To answer your question, though, each of the FIMs that has energy savings attached to it is built right in. So if you deselect it, it will take it out of the energy savings, you know, payback formula, and if you have it in, it's in there. So you guys get to pick and choose and come up with a number at the end that you're comfortable with.
It'll help, too, because, I mean, again, we have to bid on this, so this is not anything other than the fact that Jana gets it. This is the first time on the business side of it that someone actually knew it right away. And so I think that was a little bit of an issue last time, too. It's, because you get your mind up to run a bond or a taxes and police purchase and how that all works, and there's already so much on the plate, then a lot of times it just kind of gets, so you guys are definitely in a good spot, because you already know how this works financially. So it'll help, I think, kick it off for you, no matter what you, who you choose.
Excellent.
Just a comment I have. I think, and it's really not a question for tonight, it's more of a comment going forward, especially for the committees, but I'd be interested to see exactly what kind of grants might be available, especially with the ESCO knowing about them. And also, I'd be curious to know, since we are doing security upgrades and we have the security grants and everything like that, in what way we can dovetail that in perhaps with this performance contract for, like, exterior lighting, the windows, things like that, that would be a great, a great avenue and perspective to look at as well.
I think we can definitely bring in the planning piece, like, the phases of that. We do have an expiration date on some of the funding that you're talking about, for the PSIG grant, that may not last long enough to dovetail cleanly, but we can certainly look at, you know, phasing the project so that whatever we pick for a door latch system is the same door latch system that we would expand with.
Exactly, yeah.
That's a great idea.
Yeah, that, yeah, that happened in the Hopkinton Project, where we did crash bars in the door, and we put a whole new front entrance system in there, new vestibule, all new glass, Granite State Glass ended up doing that work with us. We didn't do the card access, but we made sure it was compatible with card access system that they were actually going to go with down the road. So it was, you didn't spend redundant money or, you know? So it's a good point. Life safety's a big deal right now.
Absolutely.
So it's not to just replace existing lighting one for one, it's where does it make sense? I mean, the lighting that was there was installed how many years ago? So your needs from a life safety perspective are vastly different. So, yeah.
Anything else? Thank you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Nice to meet you both.
No problem. Sorry, I couldn't do some more tricks.
Funny tricks.
I hear that a lot.
Okay, let's move on to financials.
I don't know if anyone has any particular questions, but what I can share is, last, I think it was probably in July, the district made a decision to not actually process budget transfers, I'm not sure if you remember that, so that you don't actually change your initial budget, but we've been tracking them off to the side. And it's taken me a little bit of time to get it, but I actually did sit down, and I've got it all in a spreadsheet. So like, if you were to ask me about a negative area, I can tell you if a budget transfer has been legit processed there, or if something's just an over expenditure. And I'm happy, Angie last time sent me a series of questions by email. If that's easy for you folks, I'm happy, I'm happy to respond that way, too, rather than doing it in the public forum if you have a lot of questions. So whatever works for you, works for me.
I'll send you mine, I had a lot. Wow.
Great, thank you. Just one minor request. For the three reports that were run, would it be too much of a hassle to rerun those and exclude the lines that are all zeros across?
I'm not.
Because the report size was huge.
Right. I can try and do that, but the problem is, well, let me see what I can do. Let me call ADS. I know that if there's anything in any one of the columns, even if the columns weren't selected for this report, it's going to pull it in.
Okay.
So there are columns we did not select for this particular report, but there may be a number in that. If it's a zero, I think it does leave it off, but I can certainly check with the software vendor and see if that's a possibility.
Are there any places that you wanted to highlight? I know I just had one on an Ask. Line 1469 was over expended by $30,000.
Yes, is that in the tech budget?
I don't remember, I just wrote them on my notes.
Yes, that is, actually, we just did the Capital Reserve last hearing. That's where that money is coming from, it's coming from the expendable Technology Capital Reserve Trust. I've just gathered the invoices for that, so I need to put the request forward for that payment to the trustees.
Perfect. Thank you.
And there were a couple of other lines in there that were over expended that are also going to be part of that.
Okay, awesome.
And then a question that came from the Budget Committee. Right after the, it was my last meeting before I had to miss a few back in March, some numbers that were transposed when we created the ballot?
Yes.
And then another warrant where we underestimated, or I should say, the value that was included in the question was less than what we needed in order to match the full funding for the security grant. Is everything okay with those? The DRA accepted the solutions that you had proposed?
Right. Basically, I had already spoken to the board, the district's obligation, excuse me, obligation was like 20, if I, don't quote me, but it was like, it was less than $3,000, and you had voted to find that. And we are going to be able to, we already had some Capital Reserve funding that was coming into this year, so we figure we can absorb that there. I did reach out to our attorney to find out what to do about the part that we hadn't raised and appropriated. They indicated that with the hearing that we last had last time, I think it was the last meeting, we had, we voted, the hearing had to do with unanticipated revenues. So that was what our hearing was for the PSIG grant, and so we've already had the hearing on that. When that money comes in from them, they said that that would now be able to be accepted because even though it wasn't on the ballot, we have held a hearing about those funds.
Excellent.
So we're all set there. So we're all set there.
Other questions? Anything else to financials?
Thank you.
Thank you. Policies.
I can put my computer up on the screen if we find that helpful, to get things rolling here.
I just have a point of clarification. There's a lot of policies in the policy folder for today's meeting and they're all Word documents. However, the policy committee converted them all into, um, Google Docs, which we edited in the May thirteenth folder that are specific for HB sixteen twelve. Those are the ones that have comments in and those are the ones we should be considering. I don't know, I guess my question is, are these Word documents updated based on those comments of the other folders?
They wouldn't have been updated, but they should have just had to move some over from the May thirteenth and the comments should have gone with them. So we can take a look and if you're seeing they're not there, we can certainly go to the May thirteenth folder and...
I think the ones in, in May thirteen were Google Docs, these are all Word documents, so they wouldn't, the comments weren't on the right.
The comments didn't go with them, okay. So we'll take a look at both.
And Joel, we do have, um, two lovely ladies that have offered their time tonight to come and speak to the health and wellness policy, they're on the wellness committee, so I just wanted to let you know that they are here and willing to answer questions and talk about that process with you.
Okay, all right, sure.
The first one is, um, on the agenda is the wellness policy. So J L G C. Try to stay out of your way.
Okay, since that's the first one, we do have some folks from health and wellness that are here. Is there anything in particular that you wanted to highlight on that, speak about? Or just answer particular questions if there were any?
I think we could probably just answer questions.
Okay.
What do you think, Jan?
Well, yes, except for the reference piece that you had asked me to check, which are, what we have on file is, is too old, so we wanted to make a suggestion.
Oh, yes, those documents that were referenced in there?
Yeah. We want to switch that around, which isn't on this document.
Can you just, okay, so is there anything else to say? That's, I just want people at home to be able to hear. Because they can't hear when, when we're talking from the crowd.
So in looking at this, it felt a little like some of this was policy and some of this was procedure. Um, and I think that might be some feedback I would give regarding this particular piece. So for instance, to have your plan, which is in here, team shall consist of superintendent, that, that feels, sounds a little like procedure as, as opposed to policy in terms of how you're gonna develop it. So I think, you know, in terms of that, I might make a note that it go into, you know, something related to, um, something related to procedure.
One thing that I did want to mention, Diana, with this particular policy, um, this was something that came out of our Bureau of Nutrition audit. And it was put forward to the Cooperative Extension, who rewrote it in accordance with the Bureau of Nutrition's policy. We then turned it back to the Bureau of Nutrition to say, "Does this meet what you needed?" And they said that it does. And there were some things that were added that I think that you're talking about, um, that maybe wouldn't have been, it was more of an expansion of the policy, but it was required by the Bureau of Nutrition, some of them were.
Okay.
We can look at the edits to see that, but they had some very specific comments about that.
Okay. So that's just a comment I would make about, about some of the pieces in here.
Comments or questions?
There was, um, some information in here regarding having, um, not missing recess. I know there are times when teachers hold kids in from recess in order to get some work done before they scoot them back out. Adult, yeah, go right ahead, yeah.
We actually had a huge conversation about this. All you.
So we did talk about this in the wellness committee. And the recommendation from Cooperative Extension was that recess should not be used as a punishment. Um, we did put a, a couple of things. One, we did put a clause in there saying that it was a safety issue, we would, um, is that the one that we did that on?
Yes.
I do recall.
Okay, yeah. There's, if it's a safety issue, we will remove them from physical activity or from recess, um, just because that, it's a safety issue. And then, um, I think we sort of, so this is policy and sort of when we talk about procedure, Jenna and Angela and I talked a lot about the differences. And we would, we would talk about when it's appropriate to keep students in for a few minutes, rather than, um, taking away their whole, their whole recess. And we did go back and forth on this. I, um, the bottom line is that some of those kids that are, the opinion of the wellness committee was that some of those students that are not doing their work and are not getting, following through really need that active time too. So that was why we chose to leave it in there, but we are open to suggestions if there's a different wording that you would like us to use or whatever. Can we just take this as a first read?
Yes.
So that we can, so that we can go through and, and make those corrections instead of doing it live?
Can you introduce yourself just for the record, so that, you don't have, you can just tell Sherry so that she's got it?
Sarah Gould.
Thank you. Oh, you had it already, all right, sorry. Uh, okay, was that a motion?
It was.
That was a motion for first read, second by Ms. McLehaney, discussion?
So when are we gonna make corrections? Because I thought we were supposed to review this and make them already and talk about it. I guess I'm kind of worried that we keep, we keep doing the, we keep coming back and back and back with these policies and they're piling up. We need to actually pass some and, and get them off the plate. And we need a lot of them by June thirtieth.
Well, this is the only one suggested for a first read on the whole.
The rest of them are for a final read.
And we can go straight to a final read?
We have a meeting next week.
Thanks, Mary Ann.
Next week, we have another meeting. If you have suggestions or you want us to do anything, that's when we were going to go back through and that's when we would be making the change where the smart fundraising and unhealthy eating was coming out of Michigan, shifting over to using the UNH Cooperative Extension resources. So that was the, the other piece that we wanted to add. And that's under additional, um, efforts, if you want to scroll down. Yes, okay. So where it says that, um, we are using Michigan State University, when I went back to research that, that's dated two thousand four. And we want to use a more current update. UNH has been, our, our checklist from UNH is two thousand sixteen. So we are, we will be recommending that we use UNH. So that is something that we will change for you for the next time.
So would you agree then, Mr. Frieda, probably for this one, appropriate for a first read since they're gonna be making some changes anyway?
I mean, do we have to go over the comments or will you take the comments that are in there? Do you have any questions on my comments?
We aren't, we don't have access to see that.
Yeah.
So certainly.
Why don't we give them access to see things? I don't get this.
Mr. Frieda had marked, um, discussion of whether students should, that's actually part of the line. Procedure, um, this was at Bureau of Nutrition is what we have so far. Should students lose a whole class in terms of recess? Mr. Frieda notes he didn't like the use of the word continue. It implies you're allowed never to meet the goal because the goal is just to continue. He would like us to make a plan and follow it until the goals are met. So comments regarding, um, word choice. Mr. Frieda noted again, um, in the terms of the word strive, why not actually create them instead of just trying to create them? So these are the comments you made that I copied.
And when you say continue to do, you never have to actually do it because you could always say, "Yeah, we're continuing to do it." And you never have to get there. So, you know, either we're gonna do it or we're not. So don't strive to do something or don't continue to plan, just make a plan.
Has the edits on the table?
Perfect, that'll be great. Well, I should have access to them, so I'll be at the meeting on Monday as well.
Okay. Would it be possible to share them with us before then? Yeah, absolutely. Okay.
Okay, anything else? All those in favor for first read? All right.
Could we just take a, a second to thank this committee for all the work that they've done on this policy?
Yes.
It's been exceptional, so thank you very much.
They really have, and they did it very, very quickly, knowing that we had some, a need for it. So I'm really appreciative of them taking this on and helping out with it.
Thank you, folks. Oh, thank you. We are going to close the public hearing since we stayed open. Unless there's anybody that has any questions about expending those funds. Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Thank you, Ms. Gazer. And we will move on to...
Does anybody want to discuss each of these, um, policies or can we take them as a, as a whole? Since we saw them last, there haven't been any changes, correct?
I, I think I made some recommendations, if we could just look through them.
Absolutely, yeah.
It looks like a DEHB then, yeah, she's got it up there.
Yeah, DEHB, records retention. Dealing mostly with special education, there was language that Angie deleted, um, just because it was not essential to the policy, it was a copyright. And then some changes in terms of the last edition, when it was last revised. So this one is a shorter piece. I don't think there are any other comments besides Angie's.
Right.
So the next second reading was, I think it's... That's okay. And then we, some more language, which is, I think, just history. And that was why that was again deleted.
And just so that everyone understands, um, when, so our, our school district, Farmington School District, has the policy access to the school board's association's sample policies. And we're directed to, once we do adopt and take the sample and edit it as our own, we are directed to remove their copyright. And it's simply for those districts that don't belong to the association or don't belong to the policy subscription.
Does the board want to go through each one and then adopt them as a lot or do you want to adopt them individually?
We can adopt them as a lot, but a lot, a lot of them have these kind of edits.
Well, that's what I'm saying, we can go through all of them.
We adopt them with the edits.
That's right. But in one motion.
Yeah.
So that would get, get us to E H A B?
Yep.
So you're gonna see that markup on just about all of them? We don't just simply delete it just so that the board can see what, how it's evolved or why there have been changes since the last time we've adopted a similar policy?
Same, same change in terms of an adoption that will be deleted. Definitions with confidential data information. And then this is the district information security officer, which is, is a lot more there. Talks about policies and district procedures. More regarding the duties of the security officer. Regarding data stewardship, item D. Data managers confidential and critical information. And that the information will be shared when the superintendent or designated dean said it is necessary in accordance with acceptable law. Cam provided to appropriately train district employees and volunteers only when the district determines that such access is necessary to perform the duties.
You may want to turn the microphone as well.
Oh, I apologize. I'm so sorry. We have to make sure critical information is secure, not inappropriately altered, destroyed, rendered inaccessible. That's something important to keep in mind, I'm sure, in terms of the technology, because as the technology evolves, we also have the issue of, do you have it in a format that we can actually access it? That becomes an issue, especially with special education records, because we need to keep one IEP until the, until this individual is sixty-one. The safest copy is a, is a paper copy. That might not be the case for us, but we certainly can, can see. But there's gonna be appropriate training regarding having access to confidential and critical information, um, to prevent disclosures when they are inappropriate. Data retention and deletion. I'm not sure what we're missing for this piece here. Policy established under... E H B R? Is that?
Yeah, and that's on our list, too.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. And policy and administrative procedure.
Yeah, E H B and administrative procedure.
And this would be E H B R as well? I don't know, as described in... I think that would be the first one. That would be, I think, J R A, but we will double check. I'll just write a little note.
Actually, Diana, the one up, um, in the line above that, I think the very first one is supposed to just say E H B and administrative procedure, E H B R.
Okay. Right here, you're talking about, Jenna? That's just E H B?
Yeah.
And then this one is E H B R? Okay. Consequences if you fail to follow. There's discipline up to and including termination. Particular category for volunteers. Any other comments or concerns on this one?
So if the motion is for a final read, we can strike second read and just leave it as adopted.
Okay.
Assuming it passes.
You take out the first as well? Or?
No, leave the first.
Just leave adopted? Nope. No?
Take up the second one.
Yeah, just adopted.
And just leave adopted.
And then put the date date. Please.
Okay. Any more on that? Then we'll go to E H B R. E H B R. This is the retention schedule. This talks specifically about special education, that, um, upon students' graduation, they need to be notified that their records will be destroyed upon their twenty-sixth birthday unless we get a written request to hold them until they're thirty years old. And that that information has to be supplied to parents or the students themselves. That if we received a notice to hold information, we must hold the information. Same thing with a right-to-know request. That if the right-to-know request is made prior to the destruction of material, then we must retain those materials. They need to be accessible. Extra information regarding electronic records. They're no different from paper, so basically the same, same schedule applies. And then some edits by Angie. Retention period schedule, which is the chart that we've seen, I think, previously. And then we see the list of, of items. The only thing that I did not see in here, I feel like there was a statement in here somewhere regarding, yeah, here it is. To be trained for less than ten years, as approved by the student credit, um, as the response, party responsible for the record superintendent is responsible for assuring the accessibility to maintain the PETERTECH. Okay. Thought there was a person that needed to be identified in there, but haven't, haven't seen that. And then this is just the bud, the schedule of what needs to be retained and the number of years that needs to be retained. And then the acqui, you know, materials that go along with it. Are there any questions regarding these pieces? And then again, just some historical information that's been removed.
So we did accept this as a first read on May thirteenth?
We did. So this is now up for a final read, so it would be E H B, E H A B, and E H B R would be the three that we need to be looking to put forward for approval if people are comfortable with that at this time. So anyone make a motion?
Well, I think we're gonna do the whole lot.
You want to do the whole lot?
Yeah.
And not just the second?
Yeah.
She can go ahead and put June third.
Can I put that there?
Please. Thank you.
That will get us to G D E B. Student employee relations, my apologies. There we go. I think there was one comment on this, Angie, from you in terms of presence.
And what we had, we accepted it as a first read, um, both this and J... Both this and JICDA, because they're the same language, they just get two different codes, because it relates to both students and employees. We had four different amendments that we had made when we accepted it as a first read on May 13.
Did you notice that those get, I do see some of them alone with a student, is that one of them?
Yeah, that was one of them.
That's definitely one.
Okay.
And then the other, we had said, for number four.
Yes.
Involve the presence or use, the presence of underage use of tobacco, alcohol, or drugs, or illegal drugs?
The presence of underage use for, I'm sorry, the rest of that?
You can just delete the rest of that line.
Just leave the rest, okay.
Or use of?
Yep. Of tobacco, alcohol, or?
Illegal drugs.
Illegal drugs.
Or illegal drugs.
And then the last one.
So that, I think we resolved, right? We added down here in 12, but with a student, should not be alone. With a student in a room with a door closed, a locked door. Should that be with a door closed and a locked door, or a locked door? So the door closed. In a room with a door closed. Or a locked door, or with, you want another or in there, is that what you're looking for? From here?
There's already an or, so it's door closed, or locked door, or with the door locked.
With a door closed, or a locked door, is that? I think what they're looking for is each one is exclusive?
Yeah.
Like?
Yeah.
You can't have the door shut, you can't have it locked, you can't have the light out. Any others that we wanted to include in here?
Let me see, minutes from last meeting.
Can I resolve this one? Accept suggestion. I want to accept the suggestion up here.
Yeah, it must be all of them.
Next one, were those the only two that went together, and then we go back to GBDB?
That's correct.
Employee uses social networking websites. And then some data removed, just simply because, or information removed simply because it's just a note. Let's see, we can resolve that. Just simply that staffer not to post any school district data, documents, photographs, or other district-owned or creative materials on a website. And that posting of any private or confidential school district material on such websites is prohibited. Am I permitted to put a date on here? You want just the adoption date? My computer's stuck. Sorry, my computer just froze, I'll be minute. There we go. My apologies. Freezing up here. I'll take this out. Okay, so that's GBDB. And we did the E and the G, now we're at HJICE.
Just a question, do we have to put on that we did do a first read on those? Or do you just go as straight?
I typically see, when I see them posted, I see the adopted date, not the first and second read.
Okay.
We've got a record of the first read at the minute. I don't, never seen the first read on, yeah.
JICDA. Again, just dealing with student-staff relationships, be courteous professional, atmospheric conducive to learning. Angie, you'll have to give me your language again for number four. Or involve the presence, would we have?
Of underage.
Underage.
Age. Use of.
Tobacco, alcohol, or?
Or illegal drugs. And then we had, with the door closed, or a locked door, or lights off. Anything else? All right. That gets us to JICE.
I'll see if it was adopted. With the suggestions, we could just check off, accept that suggestion. It's the beauty of dogs.
Magic of Google Docs.
All right. So you had had a significant suggestion here, and Angie will accept your correction there. You'd like to change this to read all publications, including student work must inform. And. That purposefully does not adhere to the guidelines. And then I need to do something here, like get rid of this whole, from here on.
I'll read a principal.
Whoops, my apologies. And not approved by the board will not be considered a school publication and shall not be distributed on school property. Did you want to speak to this, Mr. Frieder?
I do, I don't think it's necessary for the school board to approve everything we publish, because everything, if we publish student data, like Brian's movies, can't be published unless we approve it. And we don't want to tie everybody's hands that way. I think we should give, I think they all need to conform to our guidelines, unless it's purposefully not conforming for a reason. But I don't see, I don't see a purpose personally for the school board to approve every single thing that gets published. That's burdensome for everyone. So I don't know what to do about that line, other than we need to somehow change, change our approval process. We might want to approve some things, but I think we should leave other things up to the principals and superintendent, just make sure they follow the guideline.
So that's resolved. And this was just a note, I think, regarding. This, I think, was just a note, Mr. Frieder, regarding policy committee work, where you'd have a conversation about that, okay?
Yeah.
And then?
So I would recommend that that sentence gets striked then, because if you read it without that sentence, it meets the objective of what we're talking about.
Any publication, is that that one? Any publication not approved by the school board?
Yeah, just remove that sentence.
Okay. Okay, anything else?
Just one thought that I had, in this age where we have so much digital work product now, I wondered if maybe this policy is a little stale. Do you think that work, student work, covers all forms of that, like digital? Or do you think we should bring that piece out as a separate item?
I think anything that student produces as a work is, whether digital or not, is, it's going to be online, it's going to be made digital. I don't see a problem.
This could include the UAs when it addresses student work as well, you know?
So work encompasses any type of media? Okay. Anything else on this?
I agree.
Okay. So that's JICE, JICL. That's internet access for students. And this one is fairly short, Angie, we're just going to accept your changes.
Yep, it's all formatting.
Yep. Prevents access to visual depictions that are obscene and pornographic, and just to make sure that it is enforced, and that protections are in place for that. Anything else? Angie, we had one more thing to accept down here. And then.
We adopted this one a year ago. So six, 18, 2018.
Should I remove the last adopted?
Yeah. Because this one becomes the last adopted.
Last adopted.
Didn't realize that it was so recent.
That's true.
JRA, student records and FERPA. So I have, let me find what I'm looking for here. I asked for an opinion on our FERPA policy. Because it was indicated to me, there's some things that, just the kind of standard policy does not have in place. Let me make sure I've got the one that shows the, oh, it shows them in gray, if you're able to see them. So items that are showing up in red are those that were added by legal counsel. Mostly just simply because new things have been coming up. So for instance, grades on peer graded papers. You know, you are exchanging papers and for some reason making some editing. And then, let's see, what else? Electronic mail addresses, most recent educational agencies, so this is directory information that in accordance can be part of a directory. And then Angie will just accept these. Parents eligible, students will be given until such date to be determined after consultation to notify in writing of any and all directory items that they refuse to permit the district to release. I don't know if the board at this time has a date by which they would expect parents to, that's usually the beginning of the year paperwork that we send out, that parents are asked to, you know, sign, or do you permit pictures of your children? Do you permit this information to be released? I don't know if we feel comfortable determining a date by which we would ask that all that, those materials be in.
October 1st.
October 1st.
I think that's reasonable.
To resolve that one. See what else there is, so that, got us through that. Some changes in terms, some things that were moved and then were put in in addition. This has to do with the right to inspect students' educational records within 14 days of the date that we receive such a request. And the parents have to be contacted in order to arrange the inspection of the records. Right to request an amendment to an educational record. So there are times when you can permit disclosure without consent. So for instance, should a student be transferring to another school? We don't necessarily, if we've gotten the request, have to have a parent sign off on the permission. If there is a legitimate registration at another school district, we always take get one. But FERPA indicates that we don't necessarily have to have that. Providing information to experts or contractors that work in the school building, that that is permitted through FERPA. We can permit disclosure of records without consent to another school district if a student is seeking to enroll there. As I mentioned earlier, military recruiters and institutions of higher education are entitled to receive the names, address, and telephone numbers of high school students, and we are to comply. The right to file a complaint, and then gives the information where an individual can file a complaint. Procedure for inspecting educational records. Making arrangements to do so. Correction to a record, so here's a procedure that is mentioned. We have three levels of the procedure to do so. And kind of appeal a decision, so if the first time you ask, you ask the building principal. And the building principal says no. And then you can appeal to the superintendent, and the superintendent can say no. And then the third appeal goes to the school board. It was indicated to me that if we wish to, we don't have to do three levels. You could have the hearing held with the superintendent if you wished to do so, and to just let legal counsel know, and she can make a suggestion for that. However, if you'd like to hear that, it's certainly within the prerogative of the school board. And it details that third level decision, if that were your decision to do so. Students, pardon me, explanation to be included in a record when an individual is asking to have that done. The policy by which that occurs. Legitimate educational interests, and then goes on to define who those people might be, a substitute teacher, if there's a person in here for that, a substitute nurse. School board person who might be serving on a disciplinary issue. And then those by state statute have to receive information, juvenile probation, individuals. IRS tax purposes, that's all this stuff in red is the material that was added. Record retained in accordance. And then I think the rest is as we had it. Any questions on those?
No, it's perfect.
Okay. All right, so I'm going to.
Want to just add the date on the bottom of that before you?
I will, yes, before I forget. And I can go back and resolve these, so we don't necessarily have to watch me do that right now. Okay. So that is JRA. KB, school district, social media, websites. Jen, did you want to speak to this at all, in terms of what the pieces are? Angie will accept your alignment questions. It defines social media, I mean, a big part of it is the definitions. Superintendent designee will ensure that social media platforms provide current information regarding district programming activities. It's kind of the guidelines for our own website. Privacy, in terms of parents and students and guardians, obviously. If there's a student who does not want to have their picture posted to the website, that has to be honored. Limitation of public comments. Anything that might be obscene, libus, or incite students. It creates a clear and present danger, obviously cannot. danger, obviously cannot be part of that, or if there's, you know, mention of unlawful acts, that also would lead to certain consequences as well. And that students who post prohibited content shall be subject to discipline in accordance with the district policies. Anything else? Okay.
Some of that?
Uh huh. That's all right. Okay. I'm gonna tick off the district supervision. Okay. See, then K.V.R., the next one, which is D. These are just the regulations. Accept those changes. Superintendent designee reserve the right to remove any posts, things that are abusive, obscene, fraudulent, disparage or discriminate on the basis of age, sex, or disability, contain SAM or advertising that wouldn't be appropriate, things that violate confidentiality, intellectual property rights, law, regulation, school district policy, otherwise offensive or graphically offensive in nature, contains complaints about a district staff, which has to be handled independently and certainly not on a website. And then a missing word, the word that align with...oops. Educational misdirection of the district. Some guidance regarding tweets. Then reference to other policy. All postings and comments on the district's page page are at the discretion of the page administrators, and have the right to remove posts. Anything else? A.D.C. This is website publishing. Websites are hosted and maintained by district-appointed employees. There's an organizational responsibility that goes along with that. Department director has her primary responsibility for the content of the website. Individual school websites, principal has the primary responsibility. Posting of all items going to the website has to be done by authorized personnel only, that there are publishing standards. Should relate to curriculum, instructions, school authorized activities, information about mission in the district, school and staff work. Comply with all policies and regulations at the district and federal and state level, and international law that relates to copyrights. Statement of the copyright when appropriate. May not contain links to other pages that are not yet completed. If further links are anticipated but not yet developed, the text will provide and link can be included, but the link may not be hot or accessible until appropriate. And then we have a comment, would broaden this to noneducational? If school relates to Farmington School District, then student work done at C.T.E. centers may not qualify for publication. We should make sure our policy authorizes us to publish all student work that has educational purpose or value. So my, I guess my reading of that would be that C.T.E. centers would be school.
Would be our school.
Yeah, because it is a tuition agreement, and...does that, does that satisfy the nature of that inquiry?
I think so.
Okay. I don't know of any legal references, Angie. I don't know, do you know any off the top of your head? Okay. I can leave that there for now, and we can go back to it and take a look. Oops. All these. Cap lock. Okay. That gets us to K.H. Public solicitation in schools. No solicitation within the schools for any purpose whatsoever, so pretty straightforward.
Very straightforward.
It's got an adopted date on that one.
It's got dates that it was reviewed, but we will put an adopted date. All right. So I think we're all set with that one?
D.F.A.
So it's D.F.A., although I think the letters are transposed on your...
D.A.F.
Actually, they were supposed to be D.A.F. and D.A.F.R., and then D.F.A.
Okay. So you want to lock it, and one should be which?
Well, D.A.F. and D.A.F.R. were in the board packet, they didn't make the agenda, but I know Mr. Frida commented on those two policies, so I know they were up there. D.F.A. is the enormous policy that came out of...
That's the grant management one?
Right. Came out of the Code of Federal Regulations two CFR 200. It's required for the use of federal funds, basically across the board. It has been a process to even get a model for this. The Hampshire School Boards worked with the Department of Education to do it. It's very lengthy. From what I understand, it's not really super subjective to change at this point, if we're gonna use federal funds. And it is something that has been required by, we'll talk about it a little bit later, but it was one of our findings from a couple of our audits, that we have this policy in place as soon as possible. In fact, one of the Bureau of Nutrition is waiting for this one to gather.
So should this be D.F.A.? This should be...
This one, nope, this one, this is, I'm sorry, now I'm getting myself mixed up. This is D.A.F.
Okay.
Related to the specific provisions of the uniform.
Let me just rename it. Okay.
No, I'm sorry, it's D...I'm sorry, you were right, Diana.
That's okay.
The other ones beneath that, let me just look. Let me just pull them up.
Looks like D.A.F.
I have them in a Word document here.
The twenty-one page one is D.A.F.
D.A.F. is the grant one.
Okay.
And D.F.A. and D.F.A.R. are the investment policies.
Okay, so D.A.F. is the grants one, so let's take a look at that one.
Lots of Ds and As.
The one thing I noted on here, which is at least a problem for us, I mean, and I don't know what the guidance is from the state, is that we've only gotten one bid on anything that I've put out for bid.
Right.
So that's...
I think that if you don't get three bids, that it's pretty standard process that either you have the choice of going back out to bid, if it's something that you feel you need to do. But a lot of times, if it's, like, I can give you an example, we have a bid out now for driver's education for the school, and we probably aren't gonna get more than one bid, because they kind of marry up with different school districts. So, you know, if you don't get them, I don't think you can be required. I think they're just saying that the requirement is that you...
You attempt to.
You attempt to.
Yep. So it deals mostly with timely obligation of funds about the process of going out for bid.
I'm sorry.
Period of performance, liquidating a grant should you need to do so, once it's, once you're done with it. Cash management, fund controls in terms of, you know, how the money is managed, who's writing the check and who's checking the invoices. And then some, and guidance regarding earned interest, if you have so much earned interest, whether or not it gets turned back or it becomes wrapped into the grant. Procurement.
Should we hold it since we have D.A., D.F.A.R. and things like that, though?
Doing anything that avoids unnecessarily restricting competition. Purchasing records have to be maintained.
So if I, if you don't mind me interrupting, if you go all the way up to the top, we need a title on this.
Sure, absolutely.
And then we remove categories from ours. If we've adopted it, it's the policy. We don't give it a category.
This is a final read?
We accept it as a first read on May thirteenth. The twenty-page version. And then if I can ask a question, on May thirteenth, so Mrs. Mellon, you said that this is issued by the School Boards Association and...
But we had modified it, Ruth Ellen and I had to include, to remove, they were blank spots for school districts. We had gone through, we didn't change the language of anything, but if it was a blank spot, we put in Farmington School District in the language of it.
Okay.
And, and the other part that goes along with this is just this policy doesn't meet the standard that they're asking us to meet. We have to have internal procedures relative to certain aspects, like time and effort, kind of thing, inventory management and those types of things. And we've been working on those. We do have some internal procedures that we've drafted that go kind of along hand in hand with this. In addition, I've created an attestation form that I think might be a good idea. We talked about using as an internal form that we give to the grants bookkeeper, the superintendent, the business administrator, and any project manager on an annual basis that says, I am aware of, and I have looked at this policy, procurement, time and effort, and have them sign off on it. Just because there is so much here, that, you know, one of the things that we have to be careful of is certification of disbarment. If somebody is disbarred from doing work with the federal government, we have to have something that says that they certify that they are okay to do that. And that requires either a clause in a contract or a separate certification form. And so all contracts kind of have to have a process for being adopted, and everyone has to be aware, you can't sign a contract or obligate the district without making sure that's in place. So we're trying to also supplement this in a way that makes sense from the flow of work and the way that it works in the district.
So does this document reference the procedures as well?
This document does, again, I think with time and effort, it actually does mention that in addition to district procedures, it does say that. Some of them we have implemented on our own, because we felt that just the policy alone wasn't enough to ensure that there were people that were accountable, individuals who were accountable for different things, but...
Well, my question just is, can we really adopt this as a final read if we haven't actually finished up with the procedures portion? Where does...
I think the procedures are a, they're an internal document, they don't require board approval, policy does.
Okay.
So we're, you know, the procedures are meant to be a living, breathing document that you edit as and change as things go in your district, but this is something that we would make our procedures align with.
Right. Let's provide the guidance form.
So it's information if you were renting property, buying property, none of which we've done with a grant, but...and then the disbarment clause, which is here in J, which we started already in terms of getting, getting that paperwork done. Conflict of interest and mandatory disclosures, that if you're, you know, somehow know a person who's actually also participating in bidding in a more personal way than just colleagues, and certainly that's something you have to disclose. Inventory management and supplies purchased with federal funds, we've been pretty successful. Jennifer was very helpful in getting us through the I.D.A. onsite by having a nice inventory for us of all the technology that we have. And that no less than once every two years, superintendent so caused a physical inventory of all the equipment. So we go around and we actually check and make sure that who says they have what, actually they still have that. Preventing loss, damage, or theft of property, that that also is part of what's required when dealing with federal funds. Travel reimbursement, what's required there. In terms of travels cost, what's, what's permitted and what is not permitted, how to apply for reimbursement, you know, using, you have to use the original receipts, they have to be signed. No one can buy any alcohol. Accountability and certifications, all certifications have to be submitted in terms of those people that are working under a grant. Time and effort reporting, which is what Jana was talking about, in terms of having sufficient oversight. Compensation, and how that is paid out to those people that might be working under the grant. And time and effort reports, and reports are monthly, if I'm not mistaken, at least for the I.D.A. grant, they are monthly. And that reconciliation, and that has to be done as well. Mostly so that you make sure that you have used all of your federal funds. You don't have any hanging out there. It also mentions the different timelines, I mean, there's twenty-seven month grants, fifteen month grants, that's all captured in here as well.
And just an adopted date.
Do you want to do D.F.A., the investment in the other one?
Are we able to, Joel, if it didn't make the agenda?
Yes.
Okay. We can bring it up. Yeah, I think they're a lot shorter, and Mr. Frida had a couple comments on them.
Yeah, no, Sam, we can't. And then we just had, after this, we do have a paper one, which was the tuition agreement, and our tuition, our students who want to enroll from another public school. All right. So, did you want to talk to this, Jana?
Sure. Basically, this is just, we don't have a lot of investments that our treasurer does, but we have to have in a policy in case we did have an investment. And this talks about what the, you know, the activity shall be, safety, liquidity, and yield in that order, you know, so basically talks about students of care. And then DF, I'm getting it mixed up again. DF, D.A., D.A.F., D.A.F.R. is basically a form that you would complete with a particular financial institution that would guarantee...
That is D.F.A. D.F.A.'s correct.
Yeah, no, it was right, it was right.
Okay.
I was getting them wrong.
Okay.
And then D.F.A.R. goes along with this.
So we need to put Farmington School District in the header.
I can get back up there. Frozen for now.
Hello?
I know, that's... There it is. And I want to put that up here, right?
Well, we can take that.
I think I have that in a header.
We don't have to do that now. You guys can clean that up. Oh, we'll clean it up, yep. All right, so I'll get out of that one. Was that the last one? No, we got one more, hang on, we got two more, actually, one on the computer and then one more. One more in paper, hang in there. This is the, the one I'm attempting to get to is D.F.A.R. Yeah, is it, 'cause I have all these open. I'm sorry. Hi, folks. Let's see if I can find it now.
And the backstory on this is our financial auditors have required this, so it's coming from a different set of auditors.
Did you want to preview it a little bit while I get it up here?
Sure. It basically, it goes along with this policy, but it provides you with a document that you can complete. It's kind of a fill-in document that basically certify, it's an agreement between you and the financial institution that agrees to the provisions of D.F.A.R. So it kind of gives a format, and Mr. Frida's comment was, had to do with not, that part not being completed. I think it's not supposed to be completed in the policy. It kind of gives you a template to use when you do need it. Because I don't, if we were to put a financial institution into the policy, it would mean anytime we changed a bank or whatever, we would have to go to the board to ask for permission to change a bank.
Isn't that true? The board is the one who decides which bank we use, so you would have to do that anyway. That was, that was my point. We don't want to leave it blank. We want to assign the bank that we pick to the policy.
I can check on that. I can certainly call the New Hampshire School Boards about that. I read it differently than you did. I read it was, it was a template to use when that arises. We don't necessarily have an investment one right now.
Right.
So it's only for investments, it's not for our bank account? I guess maybe that's what I'm getting confused about.
I didn't read it as, because it's talking about liquidity and things. We have FDIC insurance up to $250,000 and we have another organization that we use to insure any amounts over that. It's a separate one. And it may apply to that separate one. I didn't read it to apply to the FDIC insured one because that one is already insured by FDIC.
So what's the board's pleasure? Would you like to table this?
Get more information.
Yeah, I didn't have any notes that we had this as a first read yet anyway.
No, this is a first read.
Oh, okay.
It was just put, no, no, this isn't a final. This was just in the board packet, just missed the agenda. So it is a first read and I can certainly get, do some research on the collateral.
All right, so we can move forward with the motion that was for all the final reads then.
All right.
And then take this one to...
Yeah. Entertain a motion to accept all presented for final reads.
We already did the first, first read for JLCG, right? So, all right, I'll move that we accept as final reads policies listed as 8B through N. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, what was I saying?
My second. A second by Mrs. Cargill in further discussion. All those in favor? I'll motion, entertain a motion to accept DFA R dash R as a first read.
And DAF?
DFA and DFA. DFA and DFA R.
DFA and DFA R.
I'll make that move.
Motion by Stan, do I have a second?
The investment ones.
Because I could say...
The investment ones.
All those in favor?
All right.
So that just leaves us one more. Sorry. But this is an important one. JFAB, admission of tuition and non-resident students. We'd had this under consideration for a first read last time. So wanted to, and we also had accompanying that a non-resident tuition agreement. If anybody needs some copies, I think I have some, some desire.
Sorry, where am I?
We are on the last policy.
We're on a paper copy of the tuition agreement.
There is one in here.
I apologize. No, I did not get that in there today.
Is this a first read?
This is a second read. We read it at the last meeting.
Oh, that's right.
Yep. And we were having a conversation, I think specifically our conversation was centering a little bit around if you have a teacher who's here and wants to have their own student come here, was there, was there a level of commitment we wanted to have from them in terms of a monetary amount or not? Certainly, obviously, for anyone else who's going to be attending, we would, we have the non-resident tuition agreement, which we would also ask, you know, any teacher here to sign as well. But up to the board's, you know, discretion in terms of whether or not that would have a monetary amount attached to it. And the non-resident tuition agreement, Jana did a nice job of spelling out how the payments will be done.
There is a thing in there, you can tell the district, I pirated from, I missed one reference to that district in there that we would need to take out.
But we don't, we don't have a final number in there as to...
Oh, I presented, I believe I presented the tuition numbers of the last...
Right, but I meant for teachers?
No, no.
No, that's the decision that you would have to make. That we have the tuition, gross tuition, but not what you would charge your teachers. That's correct.
So that needs to be in the policy?
I think it should be in, yeah, I think you should have it either in your policy. I mean, you can certainly, you can certainly say, reference it and say, "as determined annually by the board," and then you can vote on it annually if you want to. I mean, I would avoid doing a set dollar amount just simply because the tuition goes up and down. I think a percentage would be more appropriate.
The numbers could change.
But I think rather than defining it in the policy, I think you probably could say you want to vote on it annually if you'd rather do that.
Want to add that verbiage?
Yes.
Yeah. Just to add that verbiage.
And do you want a percentage in there?
You could, something that we'd be voting on annually.
Yeah, let's do it annually. Let's keep the whole thing annual.
So we don't have anything set for the coming school year?
Right. So this would be the time to...
To do it.
To do it. So we're at 50%?
I think that's what we discussed.
That's what I remember.
Yeah.
Is that 50% per student in case there's multiple kids from the same family or...
I would say per student.
For staff member? And currently, there's no contribution.
Correct.
In absence of...
I'm not necessarily opposed, but that's a big jump for folks that we've been, it's kind of like a benefit, I guess, we've offered.
It is.
Well, it's still a benefit.
Actually, I have a question. So as a, as a board, at one of our May meetings, I can't remember which one it was, I apologize. We agreed on what the calculation was for cost per pupil, right? And we took that value and said that that should be our non-resident tuition rate.
Correct.
But after thinking about it, and I voted in favor, after thinking more about it and how that number comes into play in reality, I'm not sure how exactly that value should be set, given that once a non-resident student becomes a student, their enrollment counts in our numbers, which goes towards other revenues, not just revenues raised from local taxation.
Oh, that's right.
So I actually think we, and this is something that's been going on for years, maybe setting a non-resident rate that really is too high in comparison to what the reality is of a non-resident student being enrolled here. And it hasn't really been an issue before because there weren't many non-resident students here. It was either under the agreement that we had set up with an entire community, or it was maybe manifestation hardship, I'm not sure.
So do we want to look at areas and what their non-resident tuition is? I mean, to get a good gauge for it?
I think what you're looking...
I can tell you that this is based on the New Hampshire Department of Education's template and that going even one town over, you're going to get a different rate because it depends on grant funding, it depends on students, it depends, it's a very complex calculation.
Right.
And a lot of, you're welcome to adopt any number that you want. A lot of districts do it very differently. So, but just so that you know, comparing to the next town over, depending on how their student makeup is and their demographic, you may get a very, very different number than...
But how they do it is more what their procedure...
Well, the DOE does it the same way for everybody, but what people choose to charge is a board decision.
Right. I guess what I'm saying is going in Angie's, in Angie's line of thinking, if Rochester does it by taking out the grant funding and they subtract all that.
Yeah, I can't speak to how they calculate it. I know that the cost per pupil is something that's standard across the state and the DOE does that.
Right.
And that's based on, that was what I used, I used one of their templates that he made me aware. I called up there to ask how to do this because the records that I found here in the district were done in a way that I, I wasn't sure we were capturing all the costs the way that we needed to, to come up with that, because our number, our real number of the state was very different than what we had. So, but you know, the board is absolutely welcome to adopt whatever you choose for tuition. Our funding and those types of things are based on the DOE calculations. You know, when we compare state to state across the board, that's standard.
So is my assumption correct that once a non-resident student becomes an enrolled student, that individual child's head is counted in our head count when it comes to adequacy aid and other aid that we get based on head count?
Right. That, that would be. And as you know, adequacy aid has been hot topic and it still hasn't been determined at this point. It's still being legislated. So adequacy aid can go up and it can go down and it can go away too.
So I'm thinking that our non-resident tuition amount should really be calculated as what is the total amount that needs to be raised through local taxation in order to cover the difference between the cost to educate all of the students and overhead and whatnot, less all the other revenues that we get in.
You're not going to be able to get that number before your school year starts.
We have an estimated amount now, right?
I'm calculating it based on the MS-25 you did last year for this next year. So, I mean, it could, it could be an estimate, but it would be just that, you know, and that's what this is.
Yeah. So if our, if we use that calculation based on last year's MS-25, right?
Yeah, that's what this is.
That's what our cost per pupil is.
Right.
But what I'm saying is take that value and then assess what our amount raised from local taxation is.
It already, the calculation itself already does take out certain revenues, just certain grant revenues, just so you know. It already removes food service revenue, it already removes transportation, removes...
If we had any sort of loans or any investment in buildings, that would have already been removed. We don't have that right now.
I think that, I think that in summer school, it removes.
Right. But I actually think, so the amount that we've raised from local taxation for current school year is just under $7 million. So if we divide that by our current enrollment population, I believe that value is closer to what it would actually cost this district to educate a non-resident student. Because really, the only thing we're doing is isolating where the student lives. They're either a resident of Farmington or through parental, the parenting plan, partially a resident of Farmington, or they're not. And the only thing that comes into play in that way is local taxation. I know it's very different thinking from what we've been using over the last several years, but it just kind of clicked right after we had the vote.
I do see your point.
So if we need more information, if we should reconsider what we've set for a non-resident rate?
I see your point, but I'd like to see what the numbers play out as. I'd like to see what your line of thinking would come to for a non-resident rate in comparison to...
Half. I just did the math.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
I would be, I would, this is just me speaking. I would be reluctant to divide that in half. Because I think you're, you're setting the value for the education that's being delivered here. And students that you tuition in may very well, while they might not be special education students, because that's going to have a whole other realm of financial impact, which our non-resident tuition takes into effect, can also be a high-need kid in other ways. And you can't necessarily know that when you're making the decision of whether or not you're going to allow a child to come here. And sometimes it's just by virtue of the fact that the child's been placed in foster care here and the other district is going to pay tuition. And, and so I, I could see wanting to give teachers a break and saying, you know, we need you to pay a little money in this, we need you to have a little money in the game, you know, 500 bucks, whatever, whatever you as the board decided. But I feel like this is, I feel like the numbers we have here is really a reasonable estimate in terms of...
And you're looking at cost per pupil, right?
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, I think, you know, I mean, you're looking at almost $18,000 for a high school kid. And then elementary is 16, 16.3, right around there.
So if you look at the makeup of where all of that money comes from for a resident student, where does it all come from? And if we were to enroll a non-resident student, would all of those sources look the same?
I don't know. I mean, but it also is going to your, you know, offsetting your tax rate too. I mean, it's coming in as revenue, you know? I mean, personally, I would, I would personally go with a solid number you've got right now. I mean, I, you know, we only have, you know, a few people that are interested and then those that are, that have to take this on are usually a situation where it's another school district paying us. And the rates I've seen from them are closer to the numbers we're looking at right here than half of that. So that, that would just be my advice.
So I won't make the motion to reconsider right now, but...
Maybe investigate it.
Yeah. I'm going to go kind of ask some more questions as to how the different sources of revenue work.
Policy then?
I think I can adopt the policy without a percentage in there and then the actual agreement that gets signed by each individual student, non-resident student being enrolled, that's where the percentage should come into play based on, because every single request for student enrollment that's non-resident comes before the board.
And every year, don't we also discuss the tuition rate?
Yes.
So don't, so don't put a percentage in the policy, but...
For staff.
For staff too?
I would say, I would say at this time, that's what I'm in favor of doing.
I would leave the policy, say that's a board decision and then we have to make sure that every year we set the process and what are the procedures.
So we set that process now with July 1 coming up, so non-resident.
Yeah, you do have...
So you have non-resident requests tonight, so, yep.
Right. Exactly. So I say we consider those each one by one, depending on the situation?
I disagree.
I feel, I feel that's...
I feel like we have...
But that would come into play with the decision per request.
So if the decision per request is based on if it's a staff member or a non-staff member, I can see that.
Yes.
Okay. So that's, that's the exception we're talking about?
But not between staff members.
Right.
I would propose a difference from staff members.
And not between non-residents. So it's just an issue of you are a staff member or you are not? Is that what you're talking about?
Right. That's what I...
Okay.
And that would, because we have such a small number, I'm just not comfortable right now, you know, again, I'm only one vote here, so if the four of you are comfortable, please go ahead. I'm uncomfortable saying cost per pupil is truly what our non-resident rate should be.
Well, considering that we do have issues tonight that we need to decide on, I think barring the fact that we don't have enough information, alternatively, I'm comfortable tonight with just going with what the DRA has proposed. Going forward, I'm definitely intrigued by your numbers, however.
But just to be clear, the DRA does not propose a non-resident rate to a school district. The DRA helps to compare apples to apples, comes up with a...
And just to be clear, the DRA didn't come up with this number, their template, cost per pupil.
Right.
And I took numbers to come up with it. But I just want to make sure this didn't come from DRA.
No, no, I meant their template.
And the cost per pupil is also, by the Department of Education also has their cost per pupil.
I guess what I'm saying for the first time that this has ever been kind of discussed before is those two shouldn't necessarily be the same thing. Cost per pupil and non-resident rate, I don't believe should be the same thing, and it has been for a very long time.
Well, consider those students that are staying in their resident town. They're getting that amount of money. They're, they're still, they're still charging...
Right. And I'm saying just because a student enrolls as a non-resident in another district, it doesn't truly cost the LEA that much money, that much more to educate them because of all of the other sources of revenue that that student now qualifies for because they count in the new enrollment number. And it could be a timing thing and that could be what makes everybody uncomfortable with, you know, saying it's really half of what the cost per pupil is because for a district like ours, half of our revenue comes from outside sources. It's not just local taxation.
Why do the requests have to be handled tonight?
Well, some of the...
Well, some of them were ones that we put off from the last board meeting, so they don't necessarily have to be handled tonight.
Well, we could also do in, in the quarterly billing. So if we said something in the quarterly billing that the second half would, which would be adjusted in order to accommodate the difference.
Okay. But if all of you are comfortable making cost per pupil and non-resident rate the same, and that's why we're a five-person board and I don't know, it's okay.
I mean, so you could, you could adopt your policy, I mean, because all your policy said is tuition rates will be charged at a rate set by the board and billed quarterly in advance to the district residents or the parent responsible for payment. So you can adopt your policy, it sounds like it's the agreement that we're having the issue on.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
So I think it's good to have the policy, if, even if we still want to kind of debate that.
All right, I'll make the motion to accept the policy, JF, AB.
Motion by Mrs. Moore for a final read.
Final read.
Second by Mr. Frida, further discussion?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
Deep breath. Well, we're gonna do some happy stuff first. Would you like to read the names of our new inductees to Farmington High School's National Honors Society?
I thought they were coming.
I guess not.
No, okay, when it said recognition, I thought they were coming. So these are the new members that were recently inducted into the Farmington High School National Honor Society. Senior Michael Bauer, I hope I don't pronounce these, you may have to help me. Junior Thomas Lupo, Madison Matthew, Haley Maynard, Josh Smee, Jelana Stevens, Arianna Zapala, sophomores Kimberly Bush, Mackenzie.
Jelano.
Jelano, thank you. Nicholas Johnson, Ryan Lupo, Morgan Robinson, Isaac Thomas, Anna Vanderwote, Ben Vanderwote, Chloe Weeks, and Emma Worcester. Thank you very much.
Love that stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then we wanted to also say congratulations to Julia O'Leary, who just finished her Masters of Education. She's a teacher over at Valley View Community School, so congratulations.
All right.
We did our performance contracts, and now we're at, um, job description reviews.
Right. So we have some final reads.
Thank you.
I have a couple of.
I, I, I'm, I'm just, I'm going to just put this out there. I'm done at ten tonight.
Gotcha.
So, I don't know if anybody else wants to be, but I'm really gonna cap this at ten.
Sure.
Um.
So let's take, let's take a look at the list of.
Do we want to table any of? Because we still have all of this.
So Jen, you have, what are the ones you absolutely need to have?
Right, so I definitely need to have the Network and Information Technology Associate and the Information Technology Support Associate. Those are two I have to have because I've already gone out to.
Well, the boards had a chance to go through these, what?
No, you, you just asked me to change a sentence, and I did, and I think.
And then we didn't adopt a final read after that?
No.
Remember, you wanted me to change the part about other duties, and I.
Well, I, but I saw one still in here. It was about, about changing, for lack of a better, responsibilities and duties without notice. Um, it's something still in there.
It might be the copy of that, and I'll read them.
Let me just find, let me just. I just saw it too.
Is it under other duties, this job description is not designed to cover, contain a comprehensive listing of activities, duties or responsibilities that are required by the employee for this job? As technology is constantly evolving, duties, responsibilities, and activities may change in response to match the need of the district technology supported.
Well, no, that's all appropriate. I, it was just, um.
That might be what you changed it to.
Yeah, I changed it because my idea is that.
I think you.
As long as it stays and is expected and aligned with the overall scope of the admission board position.
For the tech integration and communications facilitator.
That one, because that wasn't one that I, I want. That one, I need to just put the same.
Under other duties, the wording was. Well, we can.
I can put the same language there. I think at the time I was focused on the two that were posting out for hire. But I can do the same, same exact language. I didn't put on that one too, I will.
I, I think when we say that things are going to change with or without notice, it, it implies that, you know, I can make you go get me a coffee every day at eight-thirty, this, you know, you know what I'm saying? It's just, it's, it, when we, when we change people's duties and things and we talk about more responsibilities or different ones, there should be a professional conversation that happens, and that, that wording.
I did change it. Let me just see if you have a different copy, because actually Brian and I sat and had a conversation about it. And I said, you know, I think it's more, as long as it aligns with the vision, overall vision and scope of the position, yes, the technology will change, but as long as it aligns with the vision, um, of the position itself. So like, it's not saying, go get me a coffee, because that has nothing to do with information and. So I'm, let me find the exact wording I changed it to.
Um, but other than that, I'm.
Yes, I have it right here. Um, as technology is constantly changing, and this is the copy of his that I have, so it might be that you just haven't. As technology is constantly evolving, duties, responsibilities, and activities may change in response to match the needs of district technology supported. Any changes, however, would appropriately and respectfully align to the vision and scope of the defined role.
Perfect. Um, is the board, that's the only piece I had, is the board comfortable adopting all the final reads in one land?
I am. I'll make that one.
So that would be for a motion by Mr. Frida to adopt the final reads for the Admin Assistance Superintendent, District Treasurer, Network and Information Technology Associate, Technology Integration and Communication Facilitator, and Information Technology Support Associate. Second by Mrs. Moore, any discussion?
Didn't you say part-time bus driver?
No.
That's a first read.
That's a first read.
Thank you.
All those in favor? Aye. What's the board feel about the next four?
Could we do the federal program, general bookkeeper one? And then do that one as a first read and then wait on the other ones? No, just as a first?
I don't mind any of them as, as first. I've, I've been able to look through them, so.
I'll make a motion to accept all of them as a first read.
Okay.
I'll second that. I just, just want to note that the transportation coordinator is listed as coordinator, but the, the, uh, file name is manager, so you might want to correct that.
Oh, okay. And, um, under bus driver full-time, I think it should be a CDL or a school bus endorsement that they should hold, not just a commercial license.
CDL or a school bus endorsement.
I'm sorry, under transportation coordinator, did you say?
No, under bus driver full-time and part-time, it should, I, I think it's a school bus endorsement.
And as a terms of employment?
It was in the first, it was in the first paragraph, it was this one, a valid driver's license.
Oh, for part-time, I'm sorry.
Well, even, it was in the, it was in the full-time one.
No, for the final read, I intended it for the first one.
That's what I thought.
All right, well.
All right, I, I'm sorry, and under number four, Henny?
How do you keep up with?
Under the qualifications, yeah, so it says must have a, a valid driver's license.
Sometimes.
Number two says that, but number four says shall hold a valid New Hampshire Commercial Driver's License, that's a CDL.
Oh, with passenger endorsement, all right, I'm sorry, I missed that one, I.
So we have a motion and a second to accept the next four, which is school bus driver, part-time school bus driver, transportation coordinator, and federal program and general bookkeeper as a first read. All those in favor? Aye. Okay.
Can I? Um, motion to table D and E. I, I need the bids though to go out to write my IDA grant. I'm really sorry.
I think we can get through these.
Okay.
All right, so we're at transportation requests from neighboring districts.
Uh, the, the real simple request, um, transportation coordinator Lynn Ellis had asked if the board would consider if there were an opportunity for our district to help out another school district in terms of transportation regarding sports, and it didn't impact us in any way, would that be something the board would be willing to entertain? Simply because it builds some goodwill and so should we get into a, a tight spot that we could perhaps ask for a favor in return?
How does our insurance company feel about that?
That would be something we would have to check.
Now, let me, now, so, okay, let's, let's play that out for a minute. So I'm the AD and, and I'm working with Lynn and she can't find anybody to take us to Pelham. And I don't know why I put Pelham, we don't play them, but anyways, far enough away. You mean contacting, say, neighboring Milton, call Tim Eldridge, see if he has a driver? That would do what, drive our bus or take one of their buses and pick our kids up?
I don't know what the scenario was.
I think we need to know the scenario.
It came from a request, and I don't know all the details, but some, it didn't pan out, it wasn't an opportunity, but she had received a request from a neighboring district to, you know, they were willing to pay to use, to have our, our driver on our bus deliver the kids somewhere. They didn't wind up having to do it, but she, it brought to light the fact that we've never addressed that issue, and she wasn't sure of it, something that we even should investigate from an insurance standpoint, or we should look at because.
But we are doing that to an extent.
With Alton?
We've done it with Prospect Mountain, we've taken some of their kids to, to the Volk. And we also are doing it with Maple, um, Maple, uh, Stone.
We did, uh, last year or the year before?
No, we do it this year. We, 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 uh, their bus driver picks our kids up, brings them to the SAU in Milton, and then our driver goes and gets them.
Yep, yep.
This was brought up with, um, Ms. Vaughn just to look into, I, I have no problem with goodwill amongst districts. But, you know, there's also, that, there's also, if, if you're a teacher in this district and you move to, say, um, the Alton of the Governor-Wattworth School District, you have to go through another background check. I find that to be a little crazy. I think it's a money-making scheme somehow in the state. I really do. Um, but if that's, if that, if you, if you have to do that, why wouldn't a driver who's transporting our kids have to do it? So we did ask for that to be looked into.
Okay, okay, investigate.
Yeah. Um. Okay, response for proposals.
Yes, so let me get that in front of me here. My apologies, moving backwards here. Um, so these are, uh, we went out to bid. These are all grant-funded, um, activities. The first one that is on your list is ABA instructor and BCBA consultation. The only, um, response that came in was from Constellations. The instructor would be a full-time instructor. The details, I'll, I'll try to be fairly brief. ABA instruction, meaning for students who, who are on the autism spectrum. Small groups of students with special education needs, instruct Farmington staff in the delivery of discrete trials, uh, collection of data, behavior intervention, um, kind of modeling that, and then also assistance with writing the plans. There would also be board-certified behavior analyst consultations as well. Students would be taught by the ABA, instructor onsite at the Farmington School District, conduct assessments, assist with behavior, um, and support, um, the behavior plan. Progress reports, uh, IEPs and staff, attend all meetings. And then other language, just fees, taxes, and other surcharges would all be part of this. So the contract comes out as, and they sent a fairly lengthy proposal in terms of what they do. But it is, it's an expensive program, a hu, one thousand two hundred and sixty hours of ABA instructor with two hundred and fifty-two hours of BCBA consultation. Comes out to ninety-six thousand dollars, ninety-six thousand eighty-four dollars. The hourly consultation's two days a week, which are, is time that is used at the other buildings as well, is sixty thousand dollars, four hundred, for, sixty thousand four hundred and eighty dollars for a total of one hundred and fifty-six thousand five hundred and sixty-four. In terms of services, um, when I looked at the NEC program, the New England Center for Children, it was closer to two hundred thousand when they do your in, kind of in-house, I don't know if you've had some experience with that, if Barrington ever did it, I don't think they did. Barrington works with Constellations. That's closer to two hundred thousand dollars. They don't have someone who, they don't, the person they put in place is not the instructor necessarily. It's a person who trains, um, really what are the paraeducators, um, to be the instructors for the students. So in this model, we get someone who's already trained as an, um, ABA instructor who delivers the instruction to the students in our school district.
Why can't we hire a person and do this in-house?
So we have one already. The issue is we, this is part of building the capacity. So this person would work with the, the individual who's going to be working with our, um, life skills students in terms of showing her how to do this particular work. Because part of what we're trying to avoid when we send a student out of district, and that's kind of what we're looking at for the student unless we can figure out a, a, a way to kind of manage to keep him in-house, is a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to send him to a school that would be doing the work that we're trying to do here. And for this, a hundred and fifty-six thousand, we get the instructor and we get to build the capacity at the other buildings as well.
But this is coming out of your IDA.
Yeah, correct, this is out of the IDA grant.
I don't remember us approving bids of this nature.
You haven't, you haven't had to. That's part of the new requirements in terms of the monitoring of the federal grants is for us to go out to bid.
Okay.
I didn't realize that. Thank you.
You're welcome. So you want to motion these separately?
Uh, these are, what's the best way to motion these all at once?
It's up to you, I can go.
Are they all going?
They're all going into grants.
Let's just do it as a last, just go through the next one and.
Okay. The school, um, school-based mental health services is for, um, community partners, which has been with us, um, for an extended period of time already. And they came in with their bid, um, which is, again, to be at the schools at the same level of support that they've been there so far. First year, which would be next year, would be twenty-one thousand six hundred dollars. Theirs was for three years. Youth transition services, which would be delivered through Easter Seals. And that we have worked with them in the past as well. Um, and theirs is for a three-year bid. Would be for.
Give an example of, of, of a youth transition.
So what they do is they, for instance, for a half-day program, um, they will pick up a student, and in this case, they go to, they work at a comic book store, which is an, an interest that this child has. He takes care of inventory, um, works with cash register, works with cleaning and maintaining things. They've also attempted to get him interested in going to the gym, um, any kind of community services that, you know, might be open to him, learning about going to get a driver's license, um, going shopping, um, learning about those things, finding an apartment.
Okay.
But on a more, on a one-on-one basis because the child needs more intensity, has more.
Did you say that was a three-year?
I was just gonna ask on that too, and that's okay with the grant?
Yes, I mean, it's to get the bid, we, as long as we, we show that we have, we've gone out to bid and we've gotten something. If, we, we can always go out to bid again if we indicate that, you know, I think we'd like to take a look at something else.
We do have to have, I think, a non-appropriation clause in their contract so that if we didn't get the funding from IDA the next year, I think we do have to have that for all multi-year.
Okay.
I can help you with the language of that if they don't know.
Okay, that sounds good. OT services, um, this is for a preschool group of students. We have a large population of students with, um, autism spectrum disorder, which also brings with it accompanying, um, issues in terms of OT. This is from, uh, Strafford Learning Center. The hourly rate is sixty-two dollars and seventy-seven cents with an estimated cost of seventeen thousand four hundred and eighteen dollars. A contracted social worker, which is coming out of our, um, Student Assistance Program grant, um, which came at the recommendation of our current counselor, who is Ashley Sheedy, and I apologize, my program isn't, it's not opening up right now. But I believe it's to the tune of seventy-six thousand dollars. It's going to be covered by our carryover from the SAP grant that we didn't use last year. We're going to roll it into this year, that's already been approved. That individual will work with students in grade seven through twelve. Co-teaching consultation and instruction. And, did that get up there? It did not. This was, this group is being used by Alton, so we're able to do a cost share in terms of transportation. So I believe the final cost was twenty thousand dollars, and that's to be targeted for Farmington High School to do co-teaching specifically with special education, regular education teachers to work with those students who are struggling in math and reading.
And is that the, um, Student Assistance Program fund?
That's being funded through, Melissa just left, but I want to say it's a Title VI grant. Thank you for PD.
A motion to accept.
All the bid proposals?
All the bid proposals, yes.
For the IDA grant, okay, motion by Mrs. Moore, second by Ms. McElhenney, discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye, thank you.
All right. Two thousand eighteen audit update.
And I can make these two. And I can make these two go right together, and we can do them very quickly, so.
A solid correspondence.
Because I wasn't around for the year that was being audited, nor was I around for the initial audit process, I spent a lot of time going back and forth with the auditors to make sure I can't speak to the individual items that make up each line. But I wanted to make sure that in aggregate, our total for everything, I was able to trace back from their report to our financials. And there were a couple of numbers that had to do with some strange transactions with retainage of construction deposits that I wasn't able to initially find on my own, but I have worked with them. So it's taking a little bit of time, but I just sent them the, they call it the attestation today that basically says that I've gotten the information on behalf of the district that I feel we need to, to close that audit. And from this point forward, they, they issued their auditor's opinion. They'll issue the, the board, the auditor's opinion letter. Which brings me to my next question, which is the audit committee that you voted to create, that is really who should be receiving these letters? So I wanted to ask you how you would like to receive those, whether you want me to just send them to Joel at the, as the board chair, you know, for, for him to send out, or whether you want to convene a committee and have, have me present them so that people can ask questions. I'm happy to do whatever the board would like.
I think bringing them to the board level is. I think, I think at that time, if we feel that there is, there are questions or anything like that, I think that would be definitely the time to convene the committee.
Okay.
But we'll definitely take a look at it at that level first.
I will forward that along, and the item B kind of goes hand in hand with that. This is the remnant of the site review that we had in January for federal funds that they noted findings from our 2017 audit, a year ago. And we, some of them have to do with the policies that you folks are adopting right now. So I should be able to send them, they're looking for an answer by June 30. I should be able to give them a status update on everything, if not a final read of most of the policies, and hopefully give them all that they need so that we can close that out as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Our next, anything else, folks? Public participation at this time? Our next regularly scheduled meeting is June 17 at 6:30. I would just say that we may have a conversation about another meeting between now and then, should we need one. We'll determine that later on, but as of right now, that's when the next meeting is scheduled for. Thank you to those of you who joined us this evening and folks who came out tonight. I will entertain a motion to go in, do we still need student issue?
Well, yes, because I have some student requests.
Motion to go into non-public session two under RSA 91A:32C and J for student issue. So moved by Mrs. Moore, second by Ms. McElhenney, all those in favor, I roll. Aye.